Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is July the 3rd, 2018. We're here at City Hall at 6:00 PM. We'd like to go ahead and get the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting called to order. I will note that Tony Allen, Councilman Allen, will not be with us this evening. I'd like to call upon Fred Orkut with the Hood County Task Force Coordinator to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Reiner. All rise, please.
Mayor, Councilman Mobley told me I could pray for an hour and a half. I'll try to keep it short.
I'll talk to him about that.
Let's pray. Father, thank you. Thank you for your great, great love for us. A love, Lord, that caused you to come here to earth, to become one of us, and to die on the cross, to pay for our sins, so that we could have life with you if we trust you. Lord, thank you. Lord, thank you for this council, for the mayor, for all of the city employees. Lord, they serve us well, and I pray that you bless them, bless their families. Give them wisdom, Lord, as they deliberate tonight. Lord, you gave us the freedom to have a free government, a government that's controlled by the people and not by rulers. Lord, I pray that they would keep this in mind, that they would strike the balance between individual rights and the needs of the community. And, Lord, in all of it, that you would be greatly exalted. We ask it all, Jesus, trusting in you. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, universal, infinite, and eternal, eternal. Into the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. My pledge of allegiance to the Texas flag, one state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we have our citizens' participation, and I'm not going to read the rules because the person we have speaking has been up there before, so he knows all the rules. I'm going to call upon J.C. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, Councilpersons, and City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this minute. It's just, I really got a kind of a bulletin announcement to make. It's concerned this Saturday, it's at 9:00 at the Memorial Lane. They're going to have, this is an official Texas Fall on Eros Day, and we're going to have honor all of the law enforcement that has paid the ultimate price. We're going to honor them. We have a roll call down there, and we'd like to invite the public and everybody else to come down and to be part of that. But it's at 9:00, Memorial Lane, so come on down and help us to honor those who gave the ultimate price. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C. At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. The first item being the consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of June 19th, 2018 budget workshop and the regular meeting minutes. The second item being to consider approving engagement agreements with Norton Ross Fulbright U.S. L. P. in connection with the proposed authorization, sales, and insurance of the combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation Series 2018A and 2018B. And number three is to consider purchasing property located on Loop 567, known as the 1131 Reunion Court, 1144 Reunion Court, 1140 Reunion Court, and 1136 Reunion Court and 1131 Union Court, consisting of approximately 43 acres currently owned by the Reunion Court LP. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there that you would wish to pull off the consent agenda, or is there any items on there that you wish to make corrections to at this time?
Yeah.
Councilman Couch.
I think it'd be helpful to pull number three for a little more detail for the public to understand what that acquisition's about.
Okay, we will remove item number three on the consent agenda, which is the purchasing of the property. Council, any more discussion or any items that you wish to pull off the consent agenda at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda less item number three.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those consent agendas less item number three are approved. At this time, we will move into our deliberation agenda. Since we had a consent agenda item pulled off the consent agenda, we will move that to the front of the deliberation agenda. That will be item number one. It's considered purchasing property located on Loop 567, known as 1131 Reunion Court, 1144 Reunion Court, 1140 Reunion Court, 1136, and 1131. I'm going to call upon our City Manager to kind of kick this off, if you would, Chris, and give us a little more detail, or if you have anybody else who wants to give some detail on that.
Be happy to share with you. This property is on Loop 567, and it is approximately 43 acres. It's adjacent to Loop 567, approximately 800-foot waterfront on that, and we've been talking about this in executive session for quite some time. We propose paying for this land with utility funds out of the utility department with the intention of having future expansion for access to the lake, for a future water treatment plant in the decades to come, and also for a future wastewater treatment facility. There's also land adjacent to the highway that could be useful for building public infrastructure, such as a police station, fire department, other things. And as well, there may be some area, after we figure out how the infrastructure is parsed out, that may be left over for some valuable park space along the waterfront. So, all that is yet to be determined. So this land is currently being acquired under the acquisition for utilities, and that keeps it in the enterprise fund to where we're able to log this as an asset. And obviously, we've got a great price on the property, $1.2 million. They were asking $1.35. Came in, the land just down the street, sold for $50,000 an acre. This one came in at around $27,000 an acre, so we got a good price. And so, here we are tonight. There's a map of the property in the agenda packet. Be happy to answer any questions you have. Our Realtor that's representing the city on this is in the audience, Steve Fortner. If you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to help us as well. But we plan on closing on this property on July 10th unless the date has changed.
There you have it, Council. Does any Council have any questions or concerns for either Chris or the Realtor out there? No further questions. I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchasing of the property located at the said reunion court.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we will move into the extended deliberation agenda. Item number four, the preservation, it is a preservation report of the Granbury General Hospital, known as the Opera House Dorms Building, from Mary Saltirelli, who is the Historic Preservation and Public Relations Consultant. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can everybody hear out there? I didn't, I seen some people like this when Chris was speaking. Are you okay?
I'm up in the back.
Okay, thank you. You're the man, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Hewlett, Councilmembers, City Man, and City Manager Kaufman, and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present some preservation options to you for the historic Granbury General Hospital. Dr. L.G. Ballard and Dr. J.O. Carr built Granbury General Hospital, and it opened in 1946. The five nurses who worked at the hospital are pictured here in the second. From the left is Gladys Crockett Hendricks, the great-granddaughter of Davy Crockett. Granbury General Hospital is historically significant for advances in health and medicine in the region. It was the first large-scale medical care facility in the county, and it had a huge impact because it meant residents no longer had to drive to Fort Worth for hospital stays, surgeries, or baby deliveries. The hospital is also architecturally significant, as one of Granbury's few intact buildings remaining from the modern movement of the mid-20th century. It was designed for Dr. Ballard by C.O. Crowmaster of Fort Worth, a professional architect who designed churches and schools in the city, including St. Stevens Presbyterian and University Christian Church. As far as I know, with all the historic research I've done locally, this is one of only three historic buildings I know of in Granbury that were designed by an architect. Granbury General exhibits characteristics of the international style, a low horizontal profile, ribbons of steel casement windows, a flat roof, and plain, unadorned walls. When it opened, the local paper touted Granbury General Hospital as well-equipped hospital, modern in every respect. It featured accommodations for 20 patients, two operating rooms, a delivery room, and a nursery, and two labs. It was designed and built to be fireproof, with finished tile construction and steel casement windows, and the hospital featured modern air conditioning. In 1958, Doctors W.G. Jenkins, R.L. Brock, and R.N. Rawls enlarged Granbury General, adding 2,000 square feet and more patient rooms, a new delivery room and nursery, and laboratories. 1,000 local residents attended the grand opening in January 1959 in a city whose population was about 2,000 at that time. The modern eye-catching awning that's there today and the unique columns were added at that time. And I'd like to pause for just a minute and tell you that Dr. Rock's daughter, Linda Preston, is here tonight, and she's still very involved in our community. So, and she was there in 1959 at the grand opening, serving punch. It's in that article. Granbury General closed in 1970 for a multitude of unreconciled problems, including expenses of implementing changes required by new federal Medicare legislation. In 1976, the Granbury Opera Association acquired the hospital for use as a dormitory for drama students, and in 2006, Granbury Historic Properties Corporation acquired the opera house and the dormitory from the Opera Association. So I want to go over some tools available to the city to preserve Granbury General, and these include planning grants that could fund preservation plans and cost estimates prepared by a preservation architect. A city or 501(c)(3) organization can apply for these grants, and the grants require a determination of eligibility for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. The Texas Historical Commission makes that determination of eligibility when a formal request and documentation about the significance of the resource is sent to them. There are two planning grants available to the city. The first is a certified local government grant. Because Granbury is a certified local government and good standing, we qualify to apply for grants from this National Park Service program that's administered by the Texas Historical Commission. Certified local government grant applications this year due November 5th, and the grants are awarded next April. These grants require a 50/50 cash match or in-kind match by the applicant, and the amounts are typically $2,000 to $35,000. The National Trust for Historic Preservation also has planning grants, and they're accepting applications this October or next February 1st, and the notification to applicants is within eight weeks. Work must begin within six months. These grants require a 50/50 cash match and range from $2,000 to $5,000. The applicant must join the National Trust, and the preservation architect must be approved by the Trust, and the city can utilize both of these grants together to prepare preservation plans for the hospital. Rehabilitation grants are also available that would fund construction work on the hospital. A city or 501(c)(3) may apply for these grants, which also require the determination of eligibility for the national, for listing in the National Register. There are several possibilities for rehabilitation grants. The first is the certified local government program. Again, after the planning grant project is complete, we can reapply to them for construction funding. And then, the Texas Historical Commission also administers the Texas Preservation Trust Fund grants, and that is a state grant. Last year, those grants ranged from $12,500 to $30,000, and they require a 50/50 cash match. If the city applies to the Texas Preservation Trust Fund and receives a grant, you must grant an easement to the state that guarantees the preservation of the resource for a specific number of years based on the amount of the grant. So that is one requirement of that grant. There are also private foundation grants available for construction work, but private foundations all have different priorities. So I didn't give an in-depth report on which foundation grants because it will depend upon the use, the use of the hospital, what is determined to be the long-term use of it. For example, the Meadows Foundation in Dallas supports the arts and humanities, so it might be interested if the building remains a dormitory for drama students. The Summerly Foundation in Dallas supports Texas history, so use of the hospital as a museum might be of interest to them. Most foundations accept applications just from 501(c)(3) organizations. The Meadows Foundation will accept them from public entities like a city. Another tool that can be used to preserve Granbury General Hospital are federal and state historic preservation tax credits. Public entities like cities are not eligible to receive tax credits. However, 501(c)(3) organizations may apply for the new Texas preservation tax credit. Private owners and companies may apply for both federal and state tax credits. The building must be used for income-producing purposes and must be eligible for and then listed in the National Register. All of the work on the building must comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. I'm going to go over the two different types of tax credits with you really briefly. The federal credit is an income tax credit, applied the year the work on the building is completed. The owner can apply for up to 20% of the eligible costs to rehab the building, off the top of their income tax that year. The Texas tax credit is worth 25% of eligible rehabilitation costs, and because Texas doesn't have income tax, this credit is actually paid to the owner of the building or the nonprofit that owns it by a business that pays state franchise tax, so that they get the tax credit eventually. So a private owner who rehabs the building could possibly receive up to 45% of their expenses back in federal and state tax credits. Since 1972, Granbury's been a leader in historic preservation throughout Texas. The city's public policy is that the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation of landmarks or districts of historical and cultural significance is necessary to promote the welfare of the community. In keeping with these city policies supporting historic preservations, I'm making the following recommendations to you. At the direction of the City Manager, I've already submitted a request for a determination of eligibility for listing in the National Register to the Texas Historical Commission, and we should hear back from them within a month. While we await their findings, I recommend the city work with community members to determine a long-range goal for the use of the hospital building. I also recommend that when that planning is complete, we apply for preservation planning grants this year, and engage a preservation architect to prepare plans and cost estimates to rehabilitate the building based upon the use determined by the city. That will give us all a financial goal for full rehabilitation of Granbury General Hospital so that the community can work together to achieve that goal. So that's a very brief summary of the report. I think that you all have a copy of, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, do you have any questions for Mary Saltirelli?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Mayor, thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Can you give us some sense, let's say that we attain the grant for the architect?
Yes.
And let's, you know, there has been some numbers thrown out as far as the renovation of that, as high as $4 million, I think?
Yes, I saw that.
That was not for historic preservation. So, let's just say, let's say it's $3 million. Can you give us a sense of the maximum, do you think, if everything went well, that potentially could have come back?
No, I can't. I am not a preservation architect. I do know that there were some things, and I told the City Manager this in that report, that could possibly save money. It depends on the condition of the windows, but the windows are a significant architectural feature of the building that should be preserved, and if they can be rehabbed rather than replaced. And there, it is possible, I have a report here if you want to look at it, to make them thermally, to upgrade them thermally. So you can rehab them and upgrade them, and that might save some money. But if they're in really bad condition, they may need to be replaced with other steel casement windows. So it really takes a qualified person who's worked on those things before, and although I have a master's in historic preservation, I am not a preservation architect, so I can't really tell you that. That's what we need to engage a preservation architect for.
So basically, for the Council to make a decision on this property, the first thing we need to do is retain an architect to even know what the options are. So that's really the question before the Council?
Yes, and I think before you even do that, a determination of the use of the building needs to be made because a preservation architect would be spinning his or her wheels if they're preparing plans for a building to be something that it's not going to become. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I think that determination with the community needs to be made first, then apply for the grants, and in the grant package, we can say what the plans are to. Any other questions?
Mary, do most of these grants, if you apply for them, I know years ago when we applied for some help with the Opera House, it stayed out there for a year, maybe two years, I don't know. Do they stay out there quite a while after you apply for them?
Some of them have limits. The National Trust one, I think I mentioned it, has a limit on the time.
Yeah.
That it would take. And I was looking at the two together. If we applied for the certified local government grant on November 5th and the National Trust on October 1st, the timing, I think, would be fine.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, because that would be something, Council, you know, if we were to do that, to go possibly apply for the grant, then go in and look at architectural, you know, what it's going to take and say, okay, that grant's not even going to touch it, you know, or something like that.
Right. Well, when it comes to the construction costs, if that's what you're asking me about, I think the two grants that I went over to you for planning plus the city's match to those two grants, the 50/50 match, I'm hoping that's adequate to pay a preservation architect to prepare plans and cost estimates. But if you're asking me about construction, I think you can do phased grants. You can apply for one or two the first year, do that work. For instance, they're saying there's asbestos. Apply for one to do the asbestos abatement, do that work. Apply for one to do the next step. You would, I would recommend phasing different grants.
Chris, you have a question?
Yes. Thank you, Mary. You've done a great job for us, helping us, you know, bring some focus to possible highway to be able to put this together for preservation. Do you have any idea about the type of construction funding that may be available out there? I mean, do you think, are we stretching it to say we could receive $1 million, $2 million? I mean, what do you, 50/50 match?
Yeah, I don't think you're going to, I think that, that there's going to have to be some fundraising or funds available other than grants to pay for the rehab of the building.
Do you think it'll pay 50% of the project, or 20%?
I don't know. I can't answer, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I can't answer that question until we get, if it's $3 million, I don't know. I, I think that we'd have to look long and hard at, and do phased grant applications, but you'd be really doing well to get a third, I think.
So, you know, the architect that we did use was looking at rebuilding it with new windows and, you know, obviously doing away with asbestos and cleaning that up and making it back into a dormitory. And he did say that we could save quite a bit of money if we repurpose that building into something other than rooms with, individual rooms with restrooms and all that. So there's a lot of cost for all those restrooms and shower facilities and things like that to make it back into a suitable dormitory. So, yeah, we're talking $3 to $4 million, plus and minus, but when you go to historic preservation, do you typically see that as more expensive or less expensive or same?
That's what, that's what Councilman Couch just asked me.
Okay.
I think.
I'll leave your answer the same then, okay.
And I really, that's why I'm encouraging you to hire a preservation architect before you make up your mind what your action's going to do, and to at least do the grant applications, you know, do some planning of what it could be used for. Hire, do the grant applications, hire a preservation architect, then you can really sit down and compare apples to apples. And I'm sorry, I'm not qualified to give you that information. I don't have contractors up my sleeve.
Mary, and you're dealing, though, with preserving, you know, historical buildings and stuff. What's the guidelines if somebody wanted to preserve it on the outside, but yet the inside would be something different? Is that, is that possible?
Most, the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation of historic buildings are mostly concerned with the exterior of the building. If there are highly significant interior features intact, then they might ask you to save some of those. For instance, I don't know how many of you know the old hotel in Stevenville, the long hotel that's sitting there. Well, if you go inside it, the original terrazzo floors and columns in the entryway are there. They would want those to be preserved, those type of significant interior features. But they are not opposed to adaptive use, is what it's, no, that would not be a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So the Secretary of Interior's only concerned about the exterior. That's what I got from this conversation.
I didn't say that.
So, quick question.
I said, there are, if there are significant interior features, they would want those to be preserved.
Thank you. So, but it appears that the most beneficial grants and credits are available only to 501(c)(3) s, is that correct?
No, no. There are several that are available to the city, including the two planning grants that we just talked about. And you are a certified local government and have received many grants from that program before, so you have good standing with them. Grant, which is being used this year for the buildings that were affected by Hurricane Harvey. And that goes, Galveston received quite a few grants from that fund after the last hurricane that hit Galveston. So now, you qualify for some grants. It's only the private foundation grants where you would want to work with a 501(c)(3). And I think there are many of them, including maybe Granberry Historic Properties. I'm not sure what the status of that organization are, but there are some in town who would work with the city.
So it's something we could work in tandem?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I, I think that's what I'm trying to get to. I think the community, as far as I know, there are several people in the community who are really interested in seeing this building be preserved in the city and are willing to work to help achieve that. Any other questions?
Counsel, any more questions for Mary? Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you all very much. Thanks again for this opportunity.
And Counsel, this was just a, a report, but it's a report that we can use maybe at a later date to make some decisions on what we choose to do with the dormitory. Our next item is a public hearing to consider the following requests, and it's got a request for an executive facility improvements agreement, an executive advanced funding agreement, and to consider accepting the dedication of a drainage and a final plat. So I'm going to call upon Scott Sobchek to give us on that, and Counsel, we will be voting on all four of those.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. We've, we've seen this particular preliminary plat application not too long ago, probably about a year ago, and the rezoning request to support this final plat application was processed in February 2017. This is the Saratoga addition development. It's located generally just to the south of Temple Hall Highway on US 377. Phase 1A comprises approximately 52 acres. It was annexed in '95, '98, '05 respectively. The back portion was placed in the latter term. The zoning in and of itself in February 2017 delineated all those areas to be developed as itemized on the preliminary plat application. In general, it proposes 82 single-family detached lots, 47 townhome lots, 18 multifamily dwelling units, three commercial lots running US 377, and three common areas. Also, as a part of this particular plat application, we have a park dedication that was reviewed by the Parks Department. It was recommended for acceptance, and part of the discussion at the preliminary plat level, the acreage comprises about 5.45 acres. It's a little over the requirement based on the proposed residential units offered by the developer. Again, this is a site plan. You can see the layout. The 377 is located to the north. The red area is generally the commercial lots traveling southward. The brown, smaller area to the west is the multifamily traversing southward through the townhome lots, and then the lighter yellow to the south along Saratoga Boulevard is single-family residential. The green area that you can see to the east is the park, the 5.45 acre park that's a part of this development. Also, as a part of this development is Saratoga that traverses linearly along the single-family residential property as well. This is a close-up of the townhome lots and traversing southward toward the single-family detached residential. Okay, there are, as a part of the preliminary plat application, all the variances were processed at that time. This particular application proposes no variances to the subdivision ordinance as such, it's more ministerial in its scope. We have four individual action items as a part of this final plat application. First and foremost, we have the facilities improvement agreement. The facilities improvement agreement proposes as a part of final plating this roughly $4.5 million worth of public improvements, that's streets, drainage, water and sewer lines. The applicant has chosen to provide the city a payment performance bond. We have a 120% requirement, and the calculated requirement amounts to $6.967 million, which the developer has provided. I do want to mention that as a part of that coverage as well, and I'm going to revert over back to the US 377 intersection, if you notice, the development at 377 proposes a fourth leg of that intersection currently. It's a three-leg 377 with Temple Hall Highway going north. Saratoga Boulevard will be a new boulevard traversing through the development, so the fourth leg is added. We need to coordinate with TxDOT on this. We've had many meetings with TxDOT, quite some time ago in fact, and we have in our hip pocket a advanced funding agreement. So in our meeting with TxDOT, they chose, and this is TxDOT's thought process, I can't explain the reasoning behind it, but it, you know, we, we seem to make it work. They wanted to include the signal improvements as a part of the local advanced funding agreement, but not include the flat work, that is, the channelization work on the, on the highway. So we had to split that up. The, the flat work is a part of the facilities improvement agreement to improve the intersection channelization improvements, and the second action item on this, the AFA with TxDOT, only includes the signal, the additional mast arm, and the controller improvements. So just to let you know for record, those, those improvements to the intersection are split up between the FIA, between the signal work and the flat work at the intersection, which is covered and secured as a part of the FIA and security provided by the developer. Again, we won't release that until all the inspections are done by both TxDOT and City. Also, as a part of this, the third action item is the drainage easement, which seemed to have lagged a little bit in the process. At the deliberations of the Planning and Zoning Commission early this, well, last month, the GISD board had not voted on the easement. In fact, it was a day after the P&amp;Z meeting, so that's why you see the conditional denial from Planning and Zoning Commission. All the easements were in place with the exception of this one drainage easement that was on GISD property that has since been buttoned up, voted on by GISD, and with the assistance of our city attorney, coordinated with GISD's attorney. Jeremy, do you have any commentary regarding this? I'll defer to you before we get to the fourth item.
No, it's done.
Okay. So as a part of this easement, there's a consideration for, for $1,500. That's a, that's a requirement from GISD that's processed. It's been signed by the school district. In essence, the easement generally transfers the ownership from GISD to the city, and the city has a separate easement that transfer, keeps the ownership with the city, but the maintenance responsibilities to the HOA. The last item is the final plat in and of itself, and it creates a lots of record. As mentioned earlier during the P&amp;Z deliberations, the only condition as a part of their motion was the condition that the easement item, sub number C, be buttoned up. That has since been taken care of. Staff believes we can take the conditional denial off and recommend execution of the FIA, execution of the advanced funding agreement with TxDOT, execution of the easement agreement with GISD, and, as well as the second easement with the developer and the HOA to maintain it, and then execution and approval of the final plat as submitted by the developer. Lastly, the developer's engineer of record, Mr. Joe LaCroix, and Bill Baird with Baird Hampton Brown is in the office, should the council have any questions. And our reviewing engineer, Marty Smith with Freezer Nichols is in the audience, should the council have any questions. The vote was unanimous at P&amp;Z.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I will now open up the public hearing for anybody in the public that wish to speak on this item. Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or the developer? If not, like I said, we will go through all four of these, the first one being the, the facility improvements agreement. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to execute the facility improvements agreement with the CJB development for the construction of approximately 9.755.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on the FIA? If no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next item on here is item number B, the execution of an advanced funding agreement. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, or execute the advanced funding agreement with the Tech Department of Tech, Tech, I'm sorry, the Department of Transportation in the amount of $50,009.
Salute.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is also approved. Item number C is to consider and accept the dedication of the 30-inch, 30-foot drainage easement with GIC, GISD. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the dedication of the 30-foot drainage easement. I have that motion by Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. And last is the, the recommendation for the final plat, and as you can see, the, the conditional denial has been lifted because that has been taken care of, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Sir.
I have a second by a whole lot of people, Councilman Corrigan.
There's only two.
Yeah. I have the second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on the final plat? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll move on to the next item. Item number six is the public hearing and consider a following request of CJB development to execute a FIA and to final plat. Once again, I'm going to call upon Scott to give us the staff report on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. This is the second phase of the phased same development. You can see that it's located, highlighted in teal, generally to the ease contained within the development itself. It will have access off Saratoga Boulevard, annexed in 2005, zoned R7 in 2017 in February. This particular phase, you can see, is highlighted in yellow. It's zoned for 82 single-family detached lots. It does have one common area. As a part of this particular phase, there's also a park dedication as well, an additional 1.09 acres. Again, that meets our threshold requirements for the semitale, and you can see outlined in the plat map that you have, generally concep, generally situating Phase 2A just south of the park for both those acreage dedications, so the entire development can enjoy the park as being offered by the developer. Again, this is the final plat map of the area showing the R7 lots. The first agenda action item is the FIA. It proposes $1.872 million worth of streets, drainage, water and sewer. Again, the payment performance bond was submitted by the city. The city has received $2.274 million roughly, meeting the 120% requirement to secure the development as a part of the FIA. The engineering fees have been paid, the inspection fees have been paid, as with the previous one. No variances are tied to this particular one, those were all processed as a part of the plat application. Again, this had the conditional denial because it was tied to the prior easement sustaining itself on the need for the prior easement that has since been lifted because we have that document approved, and as such, staff is recommending removal, removing the conditional denial and executing the FIA as presented by the developer. The same engineer, Mr. Bill Baird, Joe LaCroix, and Marty Smith for the city are in the audience, if there's any design questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to execute the said FIA with CJB development.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on the FIA? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next will be the final plat. Counsel, you got any more questions or concerns about this item with Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat as removing the conditional denial that the P&amp;Z had put on there because the, the easement has been taken care of.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman, uh, Mobley? I'll get him right.
It's only been three years.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved. Moving on to item number seven. It's a public hearing and consider a following request of Liberty GNC Land Corporation to execute an FIA and to final plat. Once again, I'm going to call upon Scott Sobchek to give us a staff report on this item, would you please, Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. We've seen this preliminary plat toward the end of 2017. It's located on Water's Edge, just north of Cliffswallow and south of Catalina Bay. It's, it's right behind the sewage treatment plant. Everybody's familiar with the site. Comprises roughly 25 acres. It's currently zoned, and it has been zoned since 2001 patio home. It has a plating history of originally being platted with a small canal, had 68 lots in 2001. That plat was vacated, and since that time, preliminary plat for 105 patio home lots were approved in October 2017. Just as a side note, the final plat for this, request for final plat pre-application for review began in, um, February 2018. So there was a question at P&amp;Z as to whether or not the original preliminary plat, which has a six-month term limitation and a one-time administrative extension, had turned out, but city staff received a final plat application, pre-application, two months prior before the preliminary plat turning out. So your city staff had received that final plat, pre-application, started the review Again, the development proposes 105 lots. There are variances associated with the preliminary plat application. There are no variances with this particular final plat application. The layout appears consistent with the original preliminary plat that was approved by council. Since that time, the engineer for the developer has been working with our engineer of record on the engineering design, the particular, specific design for this development, and that's about all I have. Oh, the, the recommendation from P&amp;Z, we had a conditional denial because there were some outstanding fees that needed to be paid and consistent with our subdivision ordinance, one of which was park dedication fees. We had not received that at the time of P&amp;Z, as well as tree, we have a tree conservation plan, and as a part of this development, where some of the building footprints were placed, they were removing some trees that were identified on that approved tree conservation plan. At the time of P&amp;Z, those fees have not been received by the city. Since that time, they have come in and paid those tree removal fees, park dedication fees, and have settled up with the city. So as with the prior application, all of those conditions that were acknowledged by your Planning and Zoning Commission during the deliberation have been addressed. Therefore, this particular application has met those conditions and can be approved as submitted by the applicant. The engineer of record for the developer is Mr. Jordan Bishop. He's in the audience for the applicant. And our engineer is Chris Hay with Improte, Heads &amp; Tod. They're available for any engineering questions, and be happy to entertain any questions from the planning side, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing to the public. We do have one that has signed up to speak, Ms. Sherri Reynolds, on this item.
Hi, I do have one question, probably to be addressed to the engineer. I was curious as to the rating of the fire hydrants? Because I live beside this property, and I do know that Catalina Bay, just to the north of this property, is rated as an orange. Water's Edge is rated as a blue. And I was hoping possibly there could be a loop going into this new subdivision of Highland Park that could possibly bring up the rating of Catalina Bay, since it's an orange?
So we'll have the engineer answer that question?
Thank you for the question.
Go ahead and raise your mic up there and let the secretary know who you are.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilpersons, Sherry, thank you for the question. My name is Jordan Bishop. I'm with Jordan Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. The water improvements for this proposed development utilize an existing 12-inch water main up in Water's Edge Drive. We then loop through our subdivision and then connect to a plugged line that is currently coming out of Catalina Bay. So our development does close a loop and gets not only another point of access for Highland Park Bay, but another point of access for Catalina Bay's water system back to a 12-inch line. While I can't speak to the specific details of the improvements to the fire hydrant, I am comfortable in saying there is not going to be any detriment to the current pressures. My professional opinion would say there would be an increase. The amount of that increase, I'm not qualified to say. There would have to be field test run to experience those.
Is this your goal, to help bring up the ratings, the, uh?
I, I will admit that in designing the subdivision, I was not familiar with the rating of Catalina Bay's fire hydrants. I think this development, a side effect of this development, is the potential improvement to the pressure ratings experienced in Catalina Bay.
I think, I think our city manager can kind of identify or kind of explain a little bit. Can you, Chris, kind of?
You bet.
To Ms. Reynolds there?
I would say that it's, it's not up to this developer to improve the water to the subdivision's neighboring. It's not his responsibility. That's our responsibility as a city. We anticipate that this will improve, and Chris Hay, our engineer of record for our water system, is here. And he may have done some modeling on that, I'm not sure. Have you, Chris?
Yes.
So we have, we have, Improte Tech, Hibs and Todd has all of our water system on their computer system with modeling software to help us remove and improve those low-flow hydrants throughout the city, and we're methodically doing that with millions of dollars of improvements. And so let him address that.
Yes, I'm Chris Hay with EHT. We did plug this development into our water system model to analyze the proposed improvements. By closing this loop, it will, it will improve the fire flow in both of these, both of these subdivisions. It does, like Mr. Bishop say, close the loop back to the 12-inch in Water's Edge Drive. So I don't have those numbers on ti- on hand right now with me, but I do, I can say that the model does indicate that this connection will improve fire flow in both areas.
Thank you. And thank you, Sherry. I know that that's been a concern for you.
Yes.
You've got it on the record now.
Thank you. Lots of neighbors have been concerned about this, with all the fires we've had recently. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that we should just speak in the public on this, on this item? Not opposed, the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions for Scott or any of the engineers this time? If not, like I say, this is a two-part. This first one being the FIA and the next one being the final plat. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to execute the FIA agreement with Liberty GNC Land Corporation.
Salute.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next was the final plat. Council, you have any more concerns or questions for Scott on the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion? Scott, do we need to remove that conditional denial, that, or just make this?
Just approval as submitted, we can take the conditional denial off. Those conditions have been made.
So the, the, the motion will be without the conditional?
Mr. President.
Yep. Any more discussion on that, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved, as said. Our next item is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 18-43 approving a request of Texas Tire. Here again, I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchak to give us a staff report on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular piece of property is the old Granbury Muffler Building, that bright orange building with the interesting pole sign that is well-recognized. It's located at 2106 East 377. It's currently zoned light commercial. It's adjacent to a, uh, it's adjacent to kind of a light commercial building, and then you have the mobile gas station further to, to the east. It's, uh, it's, the applicant is requesting an SUP to do two things. It's since, since been vacant, and that particular use has been kind of grandfathered in, in a light commercial zone for some time until they recently sold it, especially the outside activity that was, everybody was taking note of. Light commercial currently only allows for interior use, inside-the-building type applications. Generally, when you migrate outside with outside storage, you, you tend to have more heavy commercial, more intense type uses. So again, the applicant's Texas Tire, they're requesting an SUP for minor auto repair. That comprises of really the installation of wheels and tires and also daily outdoor display for a couple of tire racks. Our zoning ordinance requires 10% of the gross floor area to be itemized for outside display. That comprises a little under 40 square feet. So that gets the applicant, based on the building footprint, maybe a couple of tire racks that they can roll out there if they, and they've identified that on their site plan, where the outside display area is. The, um, the SUP for minor auto repair in and of itself, because it's contained within a building, when we talked about it in the planning and zoning commission, there was no specific condition about a term limitation on there. They didn't think it reasonable, the only term lim- term limitation being applied to the outside display area for, for the tires they want to roll out during business hours. Again, this, this is a shot of the old building, uh, the, the famous pole sign with the muffler welded to it. As, so when we met with the applicant during the discussions of site planning and meeting our requirements, they presented us a site plan depicting the building with the wainscot, the stone wainscot, meeting the 30% requirement on the building. We do have that filed on record. They're also proposing as a part of their site plan to cut down the pole sign and install a new monument sign. So that was something that the applicant wanted to do on their own initiative. We didn't really have to ask for it. Just as a side comment, typically when we get building expansions outside the, the building footprint that currently exists, that's when we see the migration from 30% to 80% on the stone exterior material. So we have the site plan. We have generally the area that's denoted and read of where the storage may be. This is our land use matrix showing that in light commercial, minor auto repair inside the building and outside display, daily outside merchandise display, all require an SUP in light commercial. Our supplemental standards are itemized, site plans required, outdoor lighting, including parking lot lighting directed away from any property zone or developed for residential uses. Again, we have none of that here. No storage of wreck vehicles or parts, automotive parts. Vehicles being stored for repair shall be screened. And then we have the daily dis- outdoor display hours during business hours, which they acknowledged. We sent notices out as required by state statute to adjoining property owners. We received no letters either in support or opposition to the, to the request. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on the matter and imposed five conditions. First, that the SUP for outdoor display shall be limited to an area not to exceed 10%. And again, they've itemized that area on their site plan as required per the zoning ordinance and shall expire one year from the date of city council approval. Again, this is that kind of beta test where we can look at it, see if the outside display merchandise gets out of hand. City council has latitude in their discretionary review to kind of rein that back or call the applicant to the carpet on it. The remaining conditions are just tied to the property, no term limitations. The site will, will be developed and used in general performance with the submitted site plan. Parking shall be installed striped and inspected prior to any CO being issued. Right now, there's no striping to delineate where those parking spaces are. Building will be clad with a minimum of 30% exterior masonry content as required and defined by the zoning ordinance. And again, that's submitted on their site plan, and that will be inspected prior to the CO being issued. And the existing non-conforming pole sign, as depicted on the site plan presented by the applicant, shall be removed prior to the issuance of the CO. The P&amp;Z voted on this unanimously by a vote of, I believe, six to nothing, and Mayor, Council, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll now open up the public hearing for the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? We do have the, I guess, the owner, James Pluska, is that right? Who's in, in the audience there. Do you want to speak, James?
Uh, no, Mayor, just to answer questions.
Answer any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else in the public wish to speak? Not opposed, that public hearing. Council, any question or concerns? And like I say, you have the owner there, James Pluska, is that right?
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm, I'm James Pluska, 6820 Inwood Drive, North Writson Hills, Texas. I'm a friend and consultant to Mr. Hani Alwaban and his brothers. They will be the owner. I am the former director of planning and community development for the city of Holton City, and I've known Mr. Alwaban for 20 years. I've helped him with 38 locations in Texas since my retirement from Holton City in 2013. And I'll be glad to answer any questions concerning the site.
I have a question. You know, we, they talk a lot about the display of tires. What, why would we want to display tires outside?
Good question, Mayor. There, there will be no display of tires outside.
Oh.
Uh, Texas tires, uh, their forte is custom wheels. They do, mainly, their operations are a lot like discount tires. In other words, it's just going to be tire sales and wheel sales. And these custom wheels are, will be just on a metal rack that they will roll in and out in the morning and in the evening when they close up. And it's approximately the size of a, of a sheet of plywood, 32 square feet, and the width of the wheels, and will probably be displaying about 20 wheels on that rack. And solely just the display of the wheels will be the outside at this point. They've opened a new tire distribution center in Hurst. It's a 27,000-square-foot facility, and all of the used tires will be taken to that distribution center and dealt with there in Hurst. And they receive the new tires that they sell at this facility from the distribution center in Hurst. All, all work will be done inside. That is a through lot. We, they expect a lot of traffic in the parking area, and so there will be no work out in that parking area because of the expected traffic flow through there.
Scott, is that building got a through bay? Is that a, open in the back also? Is that?
Yes. There, there's a, a bay in the front facing 377, and then there's a bay in the back facing Old Granbury. Yes.
The other question I have from Scott here, what, did the, the P&amp;Z went ahead and approved the 30%? And, you know, that, one of the things about this building, everybody's been ready for, is to be able to, you know, this is kind of like the gateway to Granbury coming down the road, and here's this one eyesore here, and it's been there for a long time, and now we're ready to really make this a nice-looking building, hopefully, and something that's a little more attractive when you come into Granbury. And when I seen 30% masonry on this thing, I just didn't, it didn't look like that was going to cover, cover very much of the building. What's the, what's the real, what's the plan on that?
The plan is to do a four-foot wainscot around the entire perimeter of the building. It will be of Austin stone or white brick. We will have a matching monument sign replacing the very eclectic muffler sign. He, Mr. Alwaban also plans on doing some landscaping as well. The site is fully paved, but he does expect a landscape around the sign and certain areas of the building as well. We wish to present a very good facility for the city. It needs upgrades.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously, from the pictures, but, and, uh, Texas Tires has already done a substantial job of cleaning the place up. It's, uh, they held off quite a bit of material from there, from the facility.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Scott or?
Mr. Mayor.
James? Councilman Mobley?
So looking at your, your site plan, I'm actually excited about this because, and our concern stems from the fact that the previous owner, who's actually a friend of mine, his display area was the whole side of the building, and it consisted of just a pile of mufflers. So I'm glad we've changed the strategy there, but when you talk about a display area in the front, the size of a sheet of plywood, so four by eight, is that correct?
It's approximately, like the planning director said, 40 square feet, basically, is what they're allowed, and that's what, what this will entail. Again, it is, it is approximately a two-foot-wide metal shelving that the wheels are stacked in so that they can be, they, they, the types of different wheels that they sell are visible as display.
And it, it looks like it's going to be right in front of one of the bays. Is that correct? So you're going to close that off?
Uh, well, again, the, they, they will be movable. I mean, the whole display is, is, is rollable. So it, they'll just move it to the side when they're using that particular bay. They expect to use the, the bay on Old Dent Road. There is more parking in that back area as well. So really, more of the activity is going to be off the, the old, I'm sorry, Old Dent, but Old Granbury Road.
Thank you. And I'm assuming the Austin stone will amp max the pink paint on the building?
Oh, the facility will be painted for sure.
Oh, okay.
Yes, right. Texas tires, their colors are yellow and black, so it'll probably be some sort of theme of, of, of black or yellow, some sort of theme with, with what they're, they're, they affiliate with their signage.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, any more questions? Do they, do they do shocks and all that? Or they just do wheels?
No, sir. No, they're strictly wheels and tires. If, down the road, again, I, I think it depends on, on the customer activity here in Granbury. They do participate in the off-road lift kits as well. So given, I think there's a year of evaluation with the SUP process, they may do a lift kit every now and then for one of the trucks. But again, there is no major auto-type service affiliated strictly tires and wheel servicing there.
Thank you. Council, there you have it. Any more questions, concerns from these folks? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council.
If no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with those following conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number nine, is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance 1844 approving a request for the Pet Hospital of Granbury LLC. Once again, Scott, I'd like to call upon you to give us a staff report on this one, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. Uh, this particular location's 1851 Acton Highway. This is the old day and night sign before it converted to veterinary clinic. It was zoned in heavy, as heavy commercial to support the veterinary clinic in 2007 with an SUP with the allowance for outside pens. At that time, there were runs, no outside boarding as a part of the condition. The SUP was renewed in 2008 for three additional years. It bounced off our radar. It bounced off our radar a little bit, and there was a title transaction since that time and as a part of the request for a new CO currently. We, we, we as staff acknowledge that the SUP has turned out, and so that's where, why we are where we are. Again, the SUP request is for a veterinary clinic with outside pins. Site plan is attached. You can see the out plant, outside pins that are kind of in a fenced area in the upper northwest corner of the property, shown with kind of a hatched fenced area. As a, as a part of the discussion at P and Z, they recognize that there were no residential properties located in the extreme, get back to the zoning map here. It butts up against commercial property, so there were no residential properties located within, within the property contiguous with this particular subject piece of property. It's, or used within a hundred and fifty feet of the outsore, outside kennels or runs. The supplemental standards require a site plan. They require that all outdoor lighting be directed away from any property zone or developed for residential uses. And then more specifically, that pins or outdoor kennels or animals or runs for the property must be located a hundred and fifty feet from any residentially zoned or used property. Again, that's not the case here. On June seventh, the city staff mailed out twenty public notices in accordance with the state requirements. Publishing was posted in the Hood County News. Again, as of, as of tonight, we've received no letters in support or opposition to this particular request. Your planning and zoning commission did deliberate after a hearing from the applicant. Initially, staff proposed five years as a part of a condition for term limitations. The original one issued in two thousand eight was for three years. The staff supported a five-year term when it went to P and Z. And the applicant at the P and Z meeting requested a ten-year term or stated a preference for no-term limitation whatsoever. And then the remaining balance of those conditions, they were comfortable with, but they did state a longer term, ten years, or stating their, their, their ultimate preference of not having any term limitation. Very quickly, outs, all outside activity shall be screened with a stockade fence along any adjoining property or right-of-way line. No outdoor boarding will take place. Again, the term changed from P and Z, at P and Z, to ten years, and that's being presented to you by your planning and zoning commission, after which the SUP will become null and void, and the property shall be used as generally depicted on the site plan attached in the adoption ordinance. The applicant is being represented by Ms. Marcella Olson. And the P and Z, on those modified, on that modified condition and the remaining balance of the conditions, voted unanimously to approve it as, as presented with that one alteration. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions, concerns for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the following conditions. All outdoor activity, no overnight, the term grant for one, for ten years from the date of approval, and the property shall be used as general, generally in the site plan which was attached.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corbett.
Second.
And second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number ten, which is a public hearing to consider approving a request of Lisa Armstrong to replat lot fifty of the Rough Creek Estates Edition. Once again, I'm going to call Scott to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a replat application going from one lot to one lot. The purpose of this particular application, see if I can get to the plat here, purpose of this application is to reconfigure the back portion of the lot. You can see highlighted in red was the original platted area. And the dynamics of what's going on here is that was the original platted line, and since, you can see the lot that's depicted in the aerial, that has since been filled in. So, one thing that we looked at when we looked at this at DRC was B R A's involvement. So, in our correspondence with B R A, they stated that they don't own any property above a certain contour level. And so, what the, what the purpose of the replat application is, is to show where that contour line is and reclaim that property into the lot itself to make it more developable So, again, there's the old lot, and what's being presented is shifting that property line down. And you can see that there is kind of a, I guess, retaining wall and an outlet structure under that particular lot, absorbing that. And we do have, through our correspondence with B R A, their statement, we had two questions. One, you know, you have any issue with this lot line being removed because it originally showed it as part of the lake? And two, do you have any signatory interest in this particular plat taking that lot back? And we got a response through email saying, no, we recognize our property to a certain elevation south, you know, below that elevation. So, correspondence from B R A is they had no interest or authority or desire to sign the plat application. That being said, we have the surveyor, Mr. Lon Witten with Mary Hampton Brown, to respond to any questions regarding the change of lot lines here. This has been, this is an undeveloped lot. As, as a part of this particular lot going from one lot to one lot, reconfiguring the lot in and of itself, we have a litany of variances. See if I can get to those. We have a variance to three-nine and four-six to not upsize a four-inch waterline within Rough Creek Court. Again, this is a, a waterline that's, I don't know the history of it, but that's what's supporting the proposed subdivision. Approval of the variance, a variance to three-nine and four-five to not provide centralized sewer line along the frontage of the property, all being sustained by septic systems. Approval of a variance to three-one-e and four-ten to not improve north Rough Creek Court to urban standards is currently a county facility. Approval of a variance to four-eight to not install streetlights. And then we have a variance to three-nine-a and four-six to not provide hydrants within four-hundred-and-fifty feet as required by the city's public improvement policy. Again, this is on a four-inch main. This does not propose to increase the density from what's currently filed. They currently have a filed lot of record that they could develop and pull up, you know, put a house on. In essence, so they're going from one house to one house. So, you have a letter, memorandum from your engineering recommending approval as they're not increasing density, no reconsideration of everything, and approval of the plan or replat application as submitted. Your planning and zoning commission acknowledged that in their staff report, and their report to you as approval of the variances as submitted and referenced by the city engineer and approval of the replat application as presented by the developer. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the said plat with the, the variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And second by Councilman Corbett. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number eleven, is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance eighteen forty-five, which is approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend an ordinance oh-one dash eight nineteen. And I'm going to call upon Scott to give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. We had prior conversations at the city regarding amendments to six-oh-three regarding mobile food establishments that's contained within the code of ordinances. There's a provision in our zoning ordinance regarding street vending temporary that caused some confusion relative to applicants seeking a mobile food establishment. And so, working with, in consultation with the attorney, not only did he focus on really where the meat of the regulations are, six-oh-three, but also trying to provide city staff some clarification language in our zoning ordinance. So, that's what this particular, just a small amendment does to the zoning ordinance. It basically amends section eleven point nine to say permanent street vending of merchandise or food for sale for consumption to the general public is prohibited. And then it adds a statement to eleven nine that this does not apply and is highlighted in your staff report and, and highlighted on the screen and kind of a lighter blue. The white language is currently there, so the amendment would, again, be light blue. This does not apply to mobile food establishments properly permitted pursuant to article six, sixth, section six-oh-three of the city Granbury zoning ordinance. So, in essence, it's just a simple clarification to say, street vending is not mobile food vending. Go to the section six-oh-three of the mobile food vending ordinance. It's a pointer. And your planning and zoning commission recommended unanimously approval by a vote of six to nothing.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Excuse me. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning ordinance as presented by the staff.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item, item number twelve, is discuss the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen annual budget for the city of Granbury and receive input from the city council. I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to kick this off with a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Since our budget workshop completed, I've received a few comments, suggestions on what to do to improve our budget document. The first thing we wanted to bring up and see about your overall group consensus or thoughts, we've got three bulleted points here. And the first one is the employee merit-based raise going from the three percent to the four percent utilizing the savings from the health insurance premiums. That totals about, for the general fund, it's seventy-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars, and from the utility fund, it's twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And so, the next one is increase the fire department budget based on the, the proposal of the voters approving that. And, you know, hindsight's twenty-twenty, I'm sitting here thinking about this today. If the voters approve a two-cent tax in November, it wouldn't be able to be collected or assessed until October of two thousand nineteen, which would not affect this budget whatsoever. So, the idea is to try to fund these two pieces of firefighting equipment that we discussed. And by putting it on the ballot, if that's what you decide to do, we'll delay the purchase of that equipment another fiscal year. So, I had an input from another council member that's not with us tonight suggesting that we look at the five-year capital improvement plan and, and look at what it costs to fund all that equipment over the next five years and propose the tax rate to fund that equipment over the next five years in one ballot vote. And so, you know, you'd look at it as, you know, build in some growth into your adware rate as well. So, I need to bring that back at the next meeting if we're going to do something like that. So, I just need some input from y'all on those. And then the, the last one was to increase the Lake Granbury Conference Center budget by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to enhance the marketing program for the conference center by reducing the hot transfer to the Visit Granbury Incorporated. So, those were discussed internally, and so I'm bringing them to y'all to let y'all discuss them and give me direction. As you know, what I'm trying to do is, is put together my balanced budget to post on the website and the city secretary's office by the end of this month. There's a thirty-day period for the public to review that document and make comment, writing or in person. We'll have a public hearing in September where you'll be able to hear the comments from the public on that budget. And then you have the ability to adopt the budget with edits and modifications as you so may choose at that night. And that, also, we'll have a public hearing for the tax rate as well that night. So, that's kind of where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But I would like some feedback, one way or another, as to whether I should, what to do to put into this budget document.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
Well, Chris, given the, what were the two items on the fire department we were looking to?
It's a new, a new pumper truck and a new ladder truck.
Okay, it will take up to a year to actually deliver that for the most part, right?
I, I don't know. It's hard to say. Depends. Maybe Greg could answer that question.
So, typically speaking, if you order a truck and it's completely custom, so it's not a truck off the line that you're maybe changing the size of a, you know, a compartment or two, then yes, it can take up to a year, sometimes longer, for that truck to be delivered. If you're purchasing a truck that is either already in menu, already in the process or is coming into the process, because a lot of these manufacturers are just turning out trucks left and right, and they've got a stock design that they, they spit out several hundred or, or, you know, however many a year, and then you can purchase one of those that's already plugged in and make small changes here and there, but overall, it's their stock truck. Those are typically coming in anywhere between six and seven months. As, on the fire department, I know that they looked at, because that was a concern from some members of the fire department, that if the ballot passed, how soon would we be able to order the truck? And then ultimately, how long down the line would it be delivered? But most of these truck manufacturing corporations, you don't make your first payment until about a year out. So, it wouldn't be something we could even order until it was approved, but that, we wouldn't have to wait until we received that, that money in two thousand nineteen before we started the process. We could start it now and make our first payment when that money comes in.
Yeah, so, I guess that was my point, that we could, if the ballot passed, we could go ahead and write the order.
Well, the, what we would need to do to legally issue a purchase order is to appropriate the money from the dais in that way before you could issue the purchase order to buy that equipment. In other words, it's against the state law to procure equipment without first approving the budget.
Right.
So, we would need to work through that process of, of the legalities of appropriating money we don't yet have, but you see what I'm saying? Maybe we could post something else and then reimburse ourselves or something at a later time.
Be a reimbursal.
And I, and I don't know how that would work, but we would need to look into that. So, I think, I think the need is great, and I think yesterday's fire really did alert our communities how important it is what these guys do, so.
Did a great job on, on the savings on the health insurance.
We were very fortunate that we, we were, got a very aggressive Piggan Botham contractor, and he gets with the program, and we were excited to be able to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the savings of that will help us keep up with the, I don't know if y'all realize it, but the Metroplex cost of living, CPI, so to speak, is three-point-two percent. And so, we would like to, as we discussed, this is y'all's discussion too, is give a four percent merit and allow them to at least gain a little bit on CPI. So, that's merit-based, so not everybody will probably get four percent, but we hope that they're all performing at that level where they would. But we would create that pool to where they'd be able to utilize up to four percent.
And then finally, I just want to make a few comments regarding the tourism. There was a, an executive board meeting today, and in that discussion... There was an executive board meeting today, and in that discussion, there was a thought in expanding the role of BGI, and that the preference would be to have a executive session with the board members and the council on that expansion.
What does that mean?
In the future. Potentially the 17th.
Counsel, any more? Anybody else have any discussion on these three items? The merit increase, the fire department, or the conference center funding?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Yeah, and I agree with Councilman Couch. It came to my attention earlier today that there was that meeting, that there was a desire to start, to talk an executive session. I think it's probably a really good idea, and I'd like to point out that, you know, we tend to pinch the fire department, and anybody that drives out to that property that burned yesterday, I don't know how we can look these folks in the eyes and ask them to go out and fight fires for free when it's 105 degrees, they're standing and, they're wearing gear, standing next to a fire, and we're sitting in the air conditioning, looking out the window and gawking at the smoke, and how these folks donate over $2 million worth of man-hours per year to this city, and we're going to squeeze them on any kind of budget item. And that's, and that's why I initially made the comment at the budget meeting, to kind of manipulate some things and help out our conference center and move some of the general fronts from there to the fire department. And in talking to Councilman Corrigan about the extradition exercises they had a couple weekends ago, there was some equipment that they need. And again, and I'm hoping I'm sticking to the line I'm here as far as the fire department, but I think there are some things that we can supply this group just by moving some money around with existing, with the existing budget and not going up on tax rates. And as a councilperson, I think if we can do that, and it's a partnership with every group involved, from the conference center to the fire department and Visit Granbury, it should be looked at as a partnership, not as an adversarial relationship. So I welcome the opportunity to talk on the 17th, so we can get some of this hammered out, and I know we don't have to take any action on this, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, we won't be taking action, but we definitely would want to send our city manager out there to take and have something that he can, to go to work with the staff on it. Is that what you're looking for right here tonight?
Yeah. I think, I think, you know, based on conversations I've had with different people individually, I think, and tonight, in the public format here, that I don't think there's any opposition to budgeting for the 4% raise.
Plug it in.
And so, on the fire department, I think I'm, what I'm wanting to do at this point is verify how we can appropriate a purchase order after, if there is a successful election to increase expenditures for the fire department. Here, mark those 2 cents or whatever it ends up being for the next five years to buy the capital equipment they're going to need for the next five years. I would like to add to that comment that there was, there was no extradition, extrication equipment.
Yeah.
Plugged into our budget request this year that got cut. So, if they're wanting to redirect some of those new items to me, they need to send those up through the chain, and we'll look at them and address them, compare what they have with what they're asking for, and assess that. I do know that we have brand-new extrication equipment on Rescue One that we just ordered 18 months ago, so, or received 18 months ago. So, we need to look at that. We don't want to just completely do away, but I'm sure that we have one truck that has some extremely old equipment that needs to be addressed. So, you know, maybe we need to do a tour.
I bet if you look around, there's more than one.
I bet if we need to do a tour, we can, we could probably assess this as a council if you'd like, and provide for the priorities that being necessary for the budget. So I'm saying, I'm hearing that we need to look at the capital needs of the fire department, and I'll bring those back at the next meeting, and then we'll talk about what kind of ordinance you want to put together for the tax rate. That ordinance would be a special election, and we would need to approve that at our first meeting in August because of the call for elections will be at that meeting as well. So your charter review, special election ordinance will be on that agenda, plus your ordinance to have your council elections will be on that first meeting in August as well. So that's kind of the timeline on that issue. The tourism budget, I think that's a great idea to meet, discuss it under economic development, negotiations, and incentives, and then bring out what we can agree to do to address the needs and satisfy the desires of the council moving forward on that. So, so tonight, items one and two are addressed, and items one and a half, I should say, are addressed, and then the other half, and then item three will be addressed.
Right.
At the next meeting. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify.
That's for Corrigan.
Because I don't, I don't, I don't want Chris thinking that something was, you know, done out of order. That what Tony was specifying on the extrication equipment wasn't anything that we already have. It was all stuff that we, as a department, realized would be very beneficial to the speed and the accuracy of an extrication after we took that extrication class two weeks ago.
Yeah. Right on.
Not extradition.
I knew what he meant.
And it was only 103, just saying.
It was 105 yesterday when he was putting out the fire.
Right.
All right, very good. At this time, I will now declare that, once again, there was no action taken on that item there. We'll let Chris take on some of those items and start plugging them in, and we'll come back at a later date. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council convened in the open session that all our members are present except for Tony Allen, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with authorities contained in the following sections, 087, 071, 072, and 074, which is deliberation regarding economic development, consultation with our attorney, deliberation regarding real property and personnel matters. Wish everybody a happy Fourth of July. If you're not with us when we come back, we will now go into executive session. Open session, there was no action taken in executive session at this time. Counsel, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve an annual pay increase for the city secretary in the amount of $5,000 effective October 1st of 2018.
We have a motion for the city secretary's increase in her salary?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Have a second with Greg Corrigan, okay. Any more discussion on that, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We'll look forward to it. Chris, go ahead and get that executed. Thank you. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.